I am going to call to order this April 1st, April Fool's Day meeting of the Town of Kingston Planning Board. We'll start with the members of the board, so Rob Terzolo, Peter Coffin, our newest member, Paul Bean, hot off the press, Vice Chair Robin DeGueye, Ellie Alessio is our Selectments Rep., and Glenn Greenwood is our Town Planner. We have two public hearings on the agenda tonight, so we will start with the third public hearing, which is a continuance from our March 4th meeting. This is for Major Sandborne Seminary LLC located at 178 Main Street in Kingston, New Hampshire. And this is to tackle a site plan review application.
We want to do the boundary line adjustment first.
We could. Are we anticipating that'll be fast?
That, um...
Faster?
Faster, yes.
Would that be okay? Sorry, sorry for your loss there. Alright, so I lied. We're going to tackle the lot line adjustment. And this is the second public hearing for Walter G. Carter Jr. and Donna M. Carter, located at 18 and 26 Church Street in Kingston, New Hampshire. So this is for a boundary line adjustment. Is this for the big ones?
Yeah, those are the seminary plans. They are folded copies of the boundary line adjustment.
Oh, I see him.
Sure, thank you.
It got much bigger since the last time you went here.
So if you wouldn't mind, again stating for the record your name and address, please.
Walter Carter, uh, no, what are we at? 98? No, 119. Okay, Walter Carter, 119 Amesbury Road, Kensington, New Hampshire.
Donna Carter, 119 Amesbury Road, Kensington.
Alright, so it looks like, well, let me start with a question. Have you at all changed what you're asking to do since our last hearing? No. So then is it alright if we just go right to your comments of what's been updated since the last hearing? Perfect. Take it away.
Oh, you said that "we" as a royal "we." Thank you. Alright, so as we say, this is the second public hearing. We did not accept jurisdiction at the first public hearing. And so that's something that I would want the board to do, vote to do. They addressed all of the comments that I had raised from my first review. But I did add two new things. One of which is, it seems controversial. It doesn't have anything at all to do with the actual boundary line adjustment. But as far as their new plan, the one thing that nobody saw, and I think it was on the first plan, is if you look at the lot history table, that's on the very right side of the plan. It should, on the right-hand side of that table, where it says at the top, R-36. Well, at the bottom it should also say R-36, and instead it says R-31. And so that's a change that needs to be added. The second thing, and the more substantive thing from my perspective for this discussion, is not having to do with this plan directly, but having to do with the way that our tax records for town ownership, I mean for private ownership, are reflected on our tax maps, is not reflected on this plan. There is a sliver of land, a wedge of land, that actually runs along the Carter's northern boundary, according to our tax maps. That property is owned by Peter Baker, who you see is on the western side of the property. But according to our tax maps, and I believe the way Mr. Baker has been taxed, his property loops around the Carters and creates a wedge that separates both the Kleins, the Morse's, the Eldrages, and Burnaby Avenue from touching the Carter parcel. Now, let me tell you, I've heard a completely different story from a land surveyor who's done a lot of work in Kingston. On Monday, Paul Nichols called me and said that he has done extensive research in this area of town. And he doesn't believe that the way our tax records reflect property ownership is correct. But I told him, from my perspective, there are two ways to address this. I can't in good faith tell the board to sign something that doesn't comply or adhere to our tax maps. We have a tax map that shows what the properties are. And if we approve a plan that shows something different than that, when push comes to shove down the road, as we, as off of this site, they determine what their property interests are, that could end up in a whole network of conversations that I don't want to have reflected poorly because of something we have on a boundary line adjustment map. So my preferred thing is to either not show these abutters, or to have a note along the top side of this parcel that says, "Ownership here is in contention." So that they can't, so nobody in court down the road can use this as evidence that the town was saying the properties are this way as opposed to what shows on the tax map.
Does that went through all the way to Greenwood Cemetery?
It goes to a pin some, maybe only to the pin on the other side of the Klein property. But I'm not really, I'm not really sure.
If Peter's here, so he can...
Peter is here.
Yeah, I would say, ask the chair if she wants to let Peter come up. He's probably got the most information without...
Sure, Peter, come on up. You know the drill.
I'm going to stand if you don't mind, because I have this all back. What I have here in front of me, just to let you know, I bought the property...
Hold on one second.
I'm sorry?
Name and address for the record.
Peter Baker, 26 North Road, I directed the property.
Thank you.
What I have here, this is actually a copy of the town's print what they have. I bought the property, a budding, this property, I believe it was in 2005. There was a pin, look at that map that they're showing the board, on the top left-hand side, way in the top left-hand corner, you're going to see a pin that was placed in 2003. That was done on a survey by Jane Christie, the previous property owner, by Millennium Engineering. This is when they wanted to cut off the five acres originally on Greenwood Lake. You can see that down the original corner there, the five acre parcel. They surveyed that whole piece of land. It shows, it comes across by the church, it touches the back of the Klein property, which is lot 17. It goes over to the canal to a pin that was set in 2003. That's on your map. You see it says 2003? It goes to that pin and it goes back out to the body of water. This is an identical, identical survey to what's in front of you. Except, the lines have been drawn down from Burnaby Lane, lot 17, lot 18, to make it look like it abuts that surveyed print. So, you'll see this actually on the grid. This is, this is the recorded catch map of the Town of Kingston, set still in 2003. This is the identical survey that you're looking at. 1240 feet, that is a pin right there, which was set in '03, which is right here. There's your pin, that was set in '03, which is here. This map that you're looking at is 3295. That's reflected, recorded in the registry of deeds. That's what you're looking at. See this, you see the dotted line here? That dotted line actually goes out to Burnaby Lane. So this is basically showing, if this was Burnaby Lane, you would have a path over to Burnaby Lane. See what I'm saying?
Yep.
So this here, the actual map, everything's exact to what you're looking at. Except, this has been brought down closer to touch that line. And this Z, if you talk to the survey, I know Paul Nichols came in and did some work down in this corner one time, but I know this Z, talk to a survey, this is called common land. Whether it pays the taxes here, pays the taxes here.
And that's this strip right here?
No, no, this, this line here, 1240.
Yeah.
Is this line right there, 1240. This was done by Millennium Engineering.
What happened is, you can see some of these lines probably never came down to meet this line.
Right, so that's what we're contesting here, is this strip right here to this.
That pin is just pinned right there.
Got it.
Back one of the proxies.
So, can I ask a question?
You can ask any line.
Is my microphone on? Is it, is it safe to assume that... Sorry. Is it safe to assume that it is not really within the scope of the board to figure out this dispute this evening?
Correct, that's correct. We just want it known.
So, on record...
Yeah, this is, this is the survey, this is the map of the Town of Kingston.
So that's weird, okay.
That's the point, 17, which is this right here. This was done, like you said, before he even bought the property. This was done by Jane Christie.
So 17 comes down on that map. The other properties do not. I see.
There's this one.
So there should be a little strip that comes up here.
According to our tax...
That reflects that your property then wraps around this way. Correct.
This is for Millennium Engineering. I don't know if you've seen this on record. Yeah, the other ones that surveyed this, that pin, this pin here, was set in '03. And who added that?
Millennium.
Well, they, Millennium was in '08.
Yeah, so a little bit of history, until, I don't know, maybe 2007, 2006, the tax map was not this way.
Right. It looks like, it looks like the 2008 tax map
Right, they changed it.
Reflected, reflects this on...
And so, what I've been doing for the last three and a half years is what we're on their post, and we have researched every deed all the way back to the site. From Church Street all the way across, the cemetery, Pat Kleins, all of those deeds, everyone says that they end at Swafford, which is Christie. Every one of them say that. So there is a problem with the way it went. Even when Burnaby Lane was put in, it actually says that Burnaby Lane goes from, well, then it was not Danville Road, to Christie's. So that whole right-of-way goes to Christie's, so there's no gap there. And we've, so far to today, and I have a stamp thing from Paul, we've only gone over as far as the east boundary of Eldrages' property, which covers the entire Burnaby Lane subdivision. We've done a little bit on this one, which originally was Josiah Bartlett's. He deeded it to his daughter, and then they had deeded it to a Brian Sandborne. And all of those deeds match the plan that he had drawn up when you brought the property, when you had the survey done.
Yeah, if you look at, you would have seen, you would have seen on the property when I had purchased it, my surveyor called this lot 33. 33 is over here. So he had this all, this whole thing was messed up. I had a big issue with the whole survey on my property. All I'm seeing is, it cannot be, and I'm telling you right now, it cannot be solved tonight.
Oh, no, can't be.
But it should be noted that the plan that's turned in at 3295, that top boundary line has to be figured out. And that's all I'm looking for for the record. It cannot be cert, you can't solve it that. Even the surveyors will tell you, they can tell you where the boundaries are, but not on your...
So we know your deed doesn't say you go past the canal.
Correct. And again, this deed here, this 35925, this deed here, what you're looking at, is recorded at Rockingham County. So that's the recorded plan at Rockingham County, what you're looking at, that 3295.
So, to, I guess, to the point that Glenn made earlier, the most straightforward path here is to have a note on the
Correct.
The plan, just saying that the ownership of the abutting lot still needs to be sorted out.
A hundred percent.
And then, then this doesn't become something that says, "Oh, this is what the town has approved." That's all I don't want to have happen.
Perfect.
It would start up.
It would. It would absolutely become something else that became...
And it has no bearing on the...
It has no bearing on action that they are attempting to do now.
Thank you for this interaction.
If I think, we can see it.
Thank you.
It makes it.
Well, could we make it a condition of the final approval?
But first, I just want to...
They're all downstairs. The year before...
Yes. Hold on, wait one second. Because public comment is still open, so can we...
That was done before. We can take a look at that. Alright, thank you.
Thank you. And I'm going to go ahead and assume that there's no more comment from the non-public. So, we'll go ahead and close public comment at 7:05 PM. And now there is a motion on the floor to invoke jurisdiction from Peter Coffin. Motion by Peter, second by Ellie. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Which brings us to what looked like two conditions for approval if we want to move forward.
Could be good. Finish, please. Want to comment, mostly it was that second com...
Yeah.
Mostly it was your second comment that, and when you had mentioned that, the first thing I thought of was, were abutters notified? Well, obviously Peter was, because he's in the abutter over on the west side.
They actually notified.
Everybody, even if they might, might not have been in an abutter, they could be the abutter.
They did.
So, we were clear on that, so I don't think there's any, any issue there.
So it would be a condition that the lot history tables are, are 30 lot six, reflects the correct designation, which currently reads as R-31. And then a second condition, that ownership of the abutting lot lines is currently in contention, be noted somewhere on the...
Right. I would be more specific and say the ownership on the northern side of the boundary, starting at Greenwood Cemetery and going to the canal, is unknown, is not determined.
Is in contention.
Is in contention, thank you. That's the term that would might...
I think in contention is best.
Okay, good.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion. Oh, sorry, there's a motion to, the motion would be to approve the lot line adjustment with those conditions.
Motion by Peter Coffin. Second by Ellie.
The motion is to approve the swap of the land.
The lot line adjustment, which is swapping of those parcels.
But noting also that...
Conditions.
But noting the, the contention on the north side of that lot line and the typographical error in the registry table.
So motion by Peter, second by Ellie. Any further discussion?
Are you, I like unknown, but if you like in contention, we'll go with that.
I'm much more comfortable with that.
Okay.
Because unknown implies that there's no names attached to it. In this case, there's more than one name attached to it, so...
Alright, any further discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously.
So would we have the exact wording if I had me to put on my lap?
I will email that to them.
Oh, Glenn's going to email it to you. Yeah, you will. Thank you very much. Alright, and for a second time this evening, the folks from Major Sandborne Seminary LLC. Sorry for the false start there, gentlemen.
Would you like us to start?
Yeah, if you want to go ahead, maybe an update, anything that's changed since the last hearing?
So since the last hearing, we did submit a revised set of drawings and a letter from GOV Environmental Services about the location...
Can I push up for one second, sorry? Peter, Peter Baker, do you guys mind moving out? Sorry. Sorry. Sorry, there's plenty of space.
The ten offices open.
That will be the last interruption of this evening, I'm confident.
It's a problem. We submitted a revised set of drawings and a letter from GOV Environmental Services about the location of the vernal pools and a brief evaluation of that. We also got a letter from peer review with a few outstanding comments. But I thought we would just talk about the vernal pools first because there was quite a bit of discussion about it at the last meeting. So I did print out a couple color plans here, just to show you where these two vernal pools are, but it's also in your letter from GOV. They're located up at the north end. They're two fairly large areas. So we added them to the drawing. This is, this dark blue line is the 100-foot vernal pool setback. And here's the, in the proposed condition. So it's actually part of the site that we're not doing any work. I know there was some thought that they might be down in this area, but they're right here.
I also, this might be jumping the gun a little bit, but the, the letter provided dated March 18th from GOV Environmental, who it sounds like was asked to weigh in on this as a supplemental assessment, and I will just read the concluding paragraph here. "This concludes the supplemental assessment and interpretation of potential impacts to the identified vernal pools located on the reference subject property in relation to the proposed scope of site redevelopment." Oh, whoops, sorry, that's not the paragraph I wanted to read. That tells us nothing, except that the assessment is over. So vernal pools, we're in the second to last paragraph. "Vernal pools by their nature can exhibit fluctuations in observed productivity due to a variety of common environmental factors, including annual variations in precipitation, predation? My God, first time reading. And seasonal die-off. However, given that the proposed development incorporates existing structures, retains pavement in direct proximity to these resource areas, improves overall stormwater treatment across the site, and reduces impervious surface coverage, it's reasonable to conclude that there will be no direct or indirect observable adverse impacts to these resource areas as a result of project completion."
So then in addition to GOV's letter, POMFert Environmental Services also issued their peer review of our own hydrogeologic study. I don't know if the board had a chance to review that. That's not something that came from us, but from your own peer reviewer. And I don't think they took issue with any of the particulars. Mr. Greenwood can weigh in on that?
He didn't. The report actually says that they followed the rules of the Town's Aquifer Protection District. Do recommend a couple of additional monitoring wells, I believe. So I think that if we get to a point of doing some sort of a conditional approval at some point, we should refer to that, that recommendation. But they said that they followed the standards of our ordinance, and they find that groundwater is protected.
And you said for monitoring wells to be additional sites?
Yeah, there might have been a couple of the things they wanted them to do. And I will, I can put that together, but it's fairly straightforward. They are, we support what they have, what is proposed.
Okay.
And then lastly, a letter was provided from the town's engineer. And there was just, it looks like four outstanding comments. And they do need to be discussed tonight. The first one that, that he's recommending, on number four on his letter, had to do with dwelling unit one, which we've talked quite a bit about. Just for the board's benefit, that's this, this building right here. That's the one we went to Conservation Commission to discuss, and we discussed it a little bit at the last hearing. And there's a recommendation here to relocate it. It's still our desire to have it in that location. We're requesting a conditional use permit. We think there's an argument to be made, since it's already disturbed area with pavement and building. We would be able to pull it back somewhat from where it is today. But there is a certain symmetry to the site, to have it in that location, and particularly the view escape to the seminary building from Church Street. So it is our preference to maintain that unit and to keep it in that location. But it is up to the board, so...
And is that the, sorry, that is not the site where the question of impact of vernal pools was, or it is?
No, it was.
So the vernal pools are located at the north end of the site?
Yeah, they're separate.
Separate, alright.
They're separate, but I think one of the, this particular structure was a concern, was that we, the vernal pools were not identified on the plan.
But now they are, and they're nowhere near us.
And now they're nowhere near.
Which I think is probably critical to the conversation about whether construction in the wetland buffer is... Okay, alright.
So the other outstanding comment was with respect to the modeling of the stormwater. I had a couple conversations with the engineer about that. In the end, he said he would defer to the state alteration of terrain. And we're perfectly willing to have that be a condition. Obviously, we need alteration of terrain permit. We're filed with them. Actually, I received comments from them today, and they didn't specifically say anything about the modeling that he was concerned about. They had some other comments that we're going to address. So if a condition that we receive AOT approval would satisfy his comment 26, then we're obviously amenable to that. And his comment 27 had to do with the location of the vernal pools. Those are shown on the drawings. And then his last outstanding comment had to do with the culvert underneath Church Street. And I think by a little quirk of the stormwater model, it shows an increase in runoff in that culvert, even though we're decreasing from our site into the wetland. We do have a solution for that. And, you know, if a condition is that we meet the approval of the town's engineer, then we're happy to do that too. But I do have a solution for that. Yes, AOT also would, would be looking at that, so... Those, I think, were the only outstanding issues, as I read through the letter from the town engineer. But we're here to answer questions and try to advance the project.
Glenn, do you want to go through your comments?
Can I just ask one question about Dennis's comments?
Of course.
His comment on the first page of his letter, number 13, having to do with the septic system designs being done before final planning board approval. He says that, that you have said that you're agreeable to that, and is that your position now, because I thought you weren't amenable to that?
So, we've had a lot of internal discussion about that. Originally, we wanted to have them contingent upon building permit. We discussed that last time. The board took a straw vote and said no. So our preference now would be what is more conventional, that we have an approved subdivision plan showing 4K areas, which is much more typical to what you would have for a site plan. Instead of the septic systems being fully designed, we show the 4K areas. Like, that is more conventional.
Which I understood to be one of the proposed solutions last time we met, that as long as that space is designated, and each lot, I'm sorry, each area contains sufficient 4K space, that...
Yes.
Is that, is that your understanding then?
Yep, we've spoken with our surveyor.
I wasn't clear, that's why I wanted to have that discussion.
That would be our preference. Instead of conditioning it, although I guess it could be both conditions, but we don't intend to design all the septic systems before the final site plan. Because the dwellings will be somewhat customized to the future homeowners.
Alright, these are, you know, to build on that and reiterate what was mentioned during the last meeting. All of the internal homes, not the ones on the Church Street or Main Street, are essentially placeholder footprints, right? These, those homes have not been, those lots haven't been sold. The homeowner has not selected the house they would like. They have not gone through HTC review. We do not know what the exact footprint of those homes will look like. Therefore, it's difficult to commit... difficult to commit to a exact septic sign before that happens. So the 4K area is, in my opinion, the only reasonable way to move forward without, you know, sort of duplicating design efforts to check a box.
Okay, thank you. For my comments, I didn't have really new comments, I got comments about what I had already said and information to provide to the board, so. If we go through mine, we did in fact get a review of the condo documents from town council. Very minimal changes were requested. I think you've received those?
We did receive them, and I apologize, I was meaning to get those back to you, but I believe all those changes are.
I mean, it seemed like.
They were very, very minimal.
Pretty easy, so I have no doubt that you can, you can get those turned around.
Yeah.
I wanted to make the board aware of the fact that we did get the hydrogeologic study done, they, they turned it around fairly quickly, got the results back to us, was really happy for their, their quick response. Wanted to mention that the vernal pools were located, are in a different, entirely different area than what we spent so much time talking about, so that was good information to have. They are still, there are still two things the board has to act on. They have to act on whether or not to grant a conditional use permit. And in the new submitted package of information, the design team did address each of the requirements of the conditional use permit, highway responses, so that's something the board should look at. And also, there is still the outstanding waiver for the parking area. I don't think we finalized that. We talked a lot about it.
We did, I thought we came up with a decision, even though it wasn't going to be part of the conditional approval, but that the, for the gym parking area, there's two parking issues. One was the, below the standards for the seminary building. That's the one you're talking about?
That's the one.
Okay, yeah, because the other one. The other one, we decided that we didn't need to increase the parking space for the gymnasium, since that's what was there already, so.
So I heard that mentioned last time too, and I thought we discussed it. We're not requesting a waiver for the seminary parking. It's 12 units, 24 spaces, we have 24 spaces.
You're requesting that you have far fewer for the gymnasium.
Correct.
Than our standard.
We need a conditional use permit for the gym use.
Correct, that's, that's the way I have reflected in my comments, is that it is the issue of the non-compliance with the really large number required in our town standard for a gymnasium. So that's the, that's the waiver that the board has to discuss.
Out of interest, does the fact that it's an existing use with no modification require a waiver?
I think we still need a waiver.
I think it's wise, wise to put the waiver in there.
And, I mean, I have to, I'm happy to give my opinion that I think the waiver should be granted. It's, the, the use of that is controlled by, in, in large measure, by the school district. They know that it's an ancillary gymnasium, it isn't there. It used to be the main gymnasium for the school district, it no longer is the main gymnasium for the school district, so it doesn't, it doesn't have the draw that it used to have, or the demand that it used to have now.
Nor, nor will it in the future, I'm sure.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. And you just, you addressed my question about the septic system, so that was all I had in my.
I just want to go back to the note number 15 about the landscaping. So would the waiver be for both the parking and the interior plantings?
Oh, we could absolutely do that, yes.
Okay. All right. So that leaves us with invoking jurisdiction to conditional use permits.
I believe we invoked jurisdiction on this maybe in January.
Yeah, that's what you wrote in your note, and I think that you gave a date, and I think it was January, and that was my only concern, is you're pushing up against it, so.
Oh, we did, sorry.
But I think we're okay, if we, if we grant it tonight, or if we can't, it'd need an extension.
Right, then, then we really should.
So strike that, and that leaves us with two conditional use permits and a waiver request for parking and plantings, and then any other conditions before considering approval of the plan, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Can we approve the plan with those conditions to be met?
I think that's up to the board, but I don't.
We have to do the conditional use permit.
The conditional use permit is a separate process.
Yeah, that's, that's required before we go, get to the approval.
So why don't we start with the conditional use permit for the aquifer protection district, if that makes sense? And I'll get ready to read, because that's what I do. I'll have to give you one second, because I haven't made all the changes here yet. Glenn, do you happen to know which, we used to have it flagged in here? Which regulation it's in?
It's in 206, the Aqua Protection Use.
Thank you, oh, I got it right here.
It might be G, but I might be wrong.
All right. So the planning board may grant a conditional use permit for any uses listed above, which I'm assuming this falls into one of those where we wouldn't be requesting a conditional use permit, only after written findings of fact are made that all of the following conditions are met. And it's my recollection that we do these individually, so motion for each. All right, so first, A, the proposed use will not detrimentally affect the quality of the groundwater contained in the aquifer by directly contributing to pollution or by increasing the long-term susceptibility of the aquifer to potential pollutants.
You said you've read the hydrogeologic study and are satisfied, based on the information from that study, that, that were, that were good.
Correct.
So I think based on the hydrogeologic study.
You have, you had written responses that should probably be made part of the record as well.
Right.
I don't think I have copies of those, but I can see.
Yeah, she handed them out to you, so it may be extras.
Do I have them here? Who prepared it? This is the Tomford, the Myramello Services?
No, this is.
Oh, you're talking about the.
Alan Major.
The applicant submitted responses to the conditional use permit.
Got it.
Do you have a copy of that with you?
I, I can read them from here, if you need to. It says, response is that most of the work proposed within the wetland buffer is associated with the removal of existing pavement and building. Units one and two are proposed within the wetland buffer, but are further from the wetland line than existing disturbed areas, and are outside of the 50-foot wetland buffer. The development and sale of these two units is essential to support the rehabilitation cost of the seminary building.
Hold on, that's for wetland buffer construction and not the aquifer.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's the same wording.
So perhaps we just revert to the.
The hydrogeologic study?
Studies.
So based on evidence provided in the hydrogeologic study, move to affirm that the proposed use will not detrimentally affect, just as it's written in the Act.
So that would be a so moved?
That would be a so moved.
And seconded.
So was that so moved by Ellie, second by Peter Coffin? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously. So the second, or B, the proposed use will not cause a significant reduction in the long-term volume of water contained in the aquifer or the storage capacity of the aquifer. So a motion for that might sound like.
Recharge, the draw rate for the, is there a significant increase?
They, they actually indicate that there is not. Their only concern in the Tomford Environment Services' response was that if there was going to be a landscaping irrigation proposed for the site, that that would dramatically change the figures, but I think that they had, they had been told that it was not going to be irrigated, and so that is the plan.
That's correct, no irrigation.
And they feel that the study shows that there will not be a reduction in groundwater level.
Okay, I'd make the motion then that we affirm that the aquifer withdrawal will be within the permissible amounts, as backed up by the hydrogeologic survey.
Motion by Peter Coffin, second by Ellie Alessio. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. C, the proposed use will discharge no wastewater on-site other than typically discharged by domestic wastewater disposal systems, and will not involve on-site storage or disposal of toxic or hazardous wastes as herein defined.
Okay. Again, this is, all the wastewater systems are from household septic, and.
And this, this again, is one of the areas that the discussion suggested. It indicates that there are two 1,350-gallon per day leach fields proposed to be within approximately 60 feet of the southern property boundary. And therefore, TES recommends that either a more focused nitrate impact assessment be completed, and/or groundwater monitoring well be installed, so this is one of the instances.
We might have conditional, conditional.
Groundwater monitoring well being installed at that southern boundary is a recommendation of the hydrogeologic study.
Sorry, I just noticed rather than a folder and stuff for me, that would have been helpful.
Did they suggest more than one well, more than one well?
I don't believe so.
Well, if that were, I had it noted that that could be a condition, right? Okay.
So, yeah, given the proposed condition, condition of approval, that, that we agree that the septic discharge will be within the norms of, yeah, nontoxic household waste.
Motion by Peter Coffin? Second by Ellie Alessio. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. D, the proposed use complies with all other applicable sections of this article, and I think by virtue of the proposal, it does in fact comply.
So a move that because this is a proposed multi-tombing development as permitted in this district, that it meets all the requirements.
Motion by Peter Coffin, second by Ellie Alessio. Any further discussion?
I'll give it a working on this.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. E, a hydrogeologic study shall be submitted for uses whose septic system is designed for more than 2,400 gallons per day. In Zone A, a study shall be submitted for any septic system designed for more than 2,000 gallons per day.
And we have had a hydrogeologic study, has been submitted and reviewed by town, by the town, so that we've met that requirement. I'm moving that we've met that requirement, because, or they have.
All right, motion by Peter Coffin, second by Ellie Alessio. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So now we just need a final motion to approve the conditional use permit as requested.
Okay, so move.
Second.
Motion by Peter Coffin, second by Ellie Alessio. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So that brings us to the wetlands construction waiver request. And this we do have a prepared letter for, so I'm going to suggest that for the purpose of expediency, we just sort of read through this as it's written, if that works for the applicant.
Of course.
Okay. So in section 202, 8B, thank you, thank you for this, by the way, it's making it so much easier. A conditional use permit may be granted by the planning board for construction in areas designated as wetlands, as well as in areas designated as buffer areas to wetlands, provided that all of the following conditions are found to exist. So the proposed construction, the first, I'm sorry, is that the proposed construction is essential to the productive use of land, not within the wetlands conservation district. If you guys want to read your response, and then we'll incorporate that into any subsequent motions.
So our position is most of the work proposed within the wetland buffer is associated with either removal of existing pavement and building, or the construction of units one and two. They are proposed within the wetland buffer, but they are further from the wetland line than the existing disturbed areas, and they are outside of the 50-foot wetland buffer. And the development and sale of these two units is essential to support the rehabilitation cost of the seminary building.
Do we have a motion?
Although that we've confirmed that that requirement has been met for the reasons cited, and that it is necessary in order to improve the land that's currently paved to have them go in there and remove the pavement, so this is a, this is a requirement.
Motion by Peter Coffin, second by Ellie Alessio. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. The second is that design and construction and maintenance methods will be such as to minimize detrimental impact upon the wetland, and will include restoration of the site as nearly as possible to its original grade and condition.
And our position is that the current grade and condition of the wetland buffer is almost entirely disturbed and currently used as paved building and managed lawn. And our proposal is to remove the existing pavement and building and re-vegetate with appropriate wetland buffer plantings. Restored buffer is intended to remain in a natural, undisturbed state. This area will not be maintained as yard.
And I'll move that the requirements have been met for the reasons cited.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And that was a motion by Peter Coffin, second by Ellie Alessio. Third, no alternative route which does not cross a wetland or has less detrimental impact on the wetland is feasible.
And our statement is that there is no wetland disturbance proposed as part of the redevelopment.
Yeah, I think that particular requirement is often used because people need to get across a wetland area to approach a building on upland building site, and it's not applicable in this, so it's, the entire wetland area is off the building site, so I'll move the requirements we've made.
The irony is that's because it's ours. Do we, sorry, so that was a motion by Peter.
Motion, yes.
And a second by Ellie. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye, passes unanimously.
So that action just permitted the placement of units one and two as they're shown on plan to remain as they're shown on plan?
Yes, and I think that is, that is understood, and I know that Dennis had still recommended they moved out, but I think that having, being farther away than the existing maintenance and music building, and the, and the fact that it would, moving that first unit into the, closer to the driveway access, would be detrimental to the sightlines from Church Street to the seminary building, which is a sort of scenic vista. So I think that it's, they're, they're using reasonable methods to mitigate any. And so I think that it's, they're using reasonable methods to mitigate any, any damage that hasn't already occurred, and primarily because the vernal pool isn't down there. So I think that was the biggest concern we had last time.
So we need a final motion to approve the conditional use permit for construction in the area designated as wetlands.
So move.
Motion by Peter Coffin, second by Eli Alessio. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously. All right, let's tackle the waivers. So first waiver is, actually, could they both be tackled as one thing?
We should do separate, separate.
The parking and the landscaping.
We should do them separately.
We'll do them separately.
All right. I mean, it's not terribly burdensome to say waiver for parking and waiver for whatever it is, plantings, interior plantings. So, is there a motion to request the waiver from town standards for parking at the gymnasium?
Second.
Motion by Eli Alessio, second by Peter Coffin. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And now, is there a motion to approve the waiver request for interior plantings at the location around the existing gymnasium?
And just remind me what your comments were on that, and I know you had comments about interior.
We have interior landscaping requirements, and since they're really not doing a new parking lot there.
Oh, right, that was it, that there's existing.
It just, it needs the size for our interior parking requirements, but they're not really doing a change there, so asking for relief from that is completely legitimate.
Yeah, okay. Now he's a second.
Okay. Motion by Eli, second by Peter. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. So that now leaves us with, I guess, a question of if the board feels like we're far enough along to look at conditional approval for the plan with the conditions identified. I believe there were two in Dennis's notes, there might be more, actually. A condition about the condo docs. And a condition that the 4K areas around for septic be designated for each of the sites identified.
And Glenn, you saw this, I didn't, I assume that the condo docs have a provision that any amendments be approved by the planning board?
I believe so.
I know, that's the thing we, they almost never have them in there.
Yeah, I'm sure, I know, but yes.
Glenn, can I just make sure I'm not misunderstanding this? In Dennis's letter, number four, because we just approved the conditional use permit, am I to assume that that's not applicable?
Dennis's number four.
It's where he's talking about moving the items outside the buffer.
That is exactly what you can take from that.
I'm gonna strike that. So on Dennis's letter, we're left with state subdivision approval, and any other state permits with numbers must be noted on the site plan. We talked about the 4K areas. Building numbers must be town-approved. Pre-construction meeting, sequence and phasing prior to construction.
I'm assuming you'd coordinate that with Pedro downstairs. Glenn, you?
And Dennis.
Yeah, do we really, do we need that as a condition under there, the lot label?
Well, isn't that what a pre-construction meeting?
No, I'm talking about the one prior to that, about the building numbers must be town-approved. We don't actually have to say that since it's a...
Since it's a requirement.
Requirement of the town? Or should we put that?
You can.
Okay, condition.
It's supposed to be done.
Yeah, all right, true.
Six thirteen, sixteen, twenty. The applicant will provide a construction bond estimate and reduction worksheet final, prior to final approval, so we can make that a condition. Stormwater design, we talked about. Actually, no, we don't, do we have to make that a condition of approval? Just that...
Some water.
That the stormwater design is included as part of the alteration of terrain permit? How, how did that get left?
Yeah, Dennis said as long as, if it's approved, as long as the AOT permit is approved, then he believes that his issue is taken care of.
All right, so then the condition for there was that the state engineers have finished their review and provide an AOT approval. All right, got it. And the stormwater operation and maintenance plan must be recorded in the registry of deeds. We talked about the vernal pools. Are those shown on the plans currently, the updated location?
They are actually shown on the plans that you have in front of you.
Okay.
Okay.
They are, they are shown already.
And then, I guess, question what to do with 29, that doesn't need to be a condition necessarily if, common question, there will be zero tolerance for any additional water to come off the sem, oh, okay. So what do we want to do with, I guess, with number 29?
Number nine.
If it's improved over what's existing currently?
We're open to a condition simply that we can increase the, the rate of runoff from our site at the culvert, or any point, really, but, I mean, we're gonna submit another set of drawings for the town engineer to have a final look at. Probably, I don't know if he wants to look at the drainage report again, or just leave it in the hands of AOT, but we would definitely meet that standard that the butter requested. We're not gonna increase, increase the rate of runoff coming off the site.
Okay, so we could put this as a condition approvals, now we increase in runoff on site? Because that's part of our requirements, is that increase in runoff being infiltrated on site?
Can, can we just look at what he's really saying in number 26?
Twenty-six, of stormwater design?
He's, he's, Dennis is counseling the board not to do a conditional approval until we hear from this date on the AOT permit, which is entirely not the way we have ever done a conditional approval before. We always say it's conditioned upon receiving an AOT approval. He's saying that he doesn't advise us to grant a conditional approval that states, that it's conditioned upon the state approval, but we always do that.
And I don't think we should make a change of this, I mean...
I mean, he's saying it because he strongly disagrees.
What he's saying is that the, he believes the state engineers will come back with a different, with numbers that would be with him, and...
But if, if that's the case, then those adjustments would need to be made prior to the issue of the alteration of terrain.
Of the alteration of terrain.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay, so the condition could be that...
We have an alteration of terrain.
This is contingent upon the issuance of the AOT.
We always say the condition of approval is contingent upon state permits.
Okay.
Of which the alteration of terrain is one.
Which we've already filed, they've already issued comments, maybe you are copied, I'm not sure, but they don't take issue with the modeling as, as, as he did. I had a couple phone conversations with him. My first phone conversation, he agreed, then he called me back a half hour later and said, no, I still don't get it. I was like, okay. He said, we'll just let AOT review it, and I said, that's fine.
Which they've done and issued the permit?
They have not issued the permit yet.
Okay.
They have some comments as well, which is typical, that we're gonna address.
Right.
We'll get our permit, but it'll be a month or two.
And he's saying he's, oh, he's okay with AOT, the engineers at DOT, being mediators of this. So if he's saying that, why would we not condition the approval on the purpose of this? He's saying he's comfortable with them mediating that issue?
Yeah, I wonder if he's, he means final approval until we get the AOT, but we don't get final approvals prior to AOT anyways, so.
I mean, we, if they don't get an AOT permit, then the conditional approval isn't, doesn't go forward. It's as easy as that.
Shouldn't they just work closely?
No, because if we do this, what he's saying is we can't dispatch him until AOT completes the process, and that could literally take four more months. I don't, I don't know how long it would take. It isn't the way that we do, that is not...
So to Eli's point, perhaps we don't start doing that tonight.
That's not change of normal judicial behavior. I think he's just confused. Let him go with that.
Dennis is never confused. He's definitely not in agreement, but he's saying he's okay with the, with the engineers at DOT mediating this effort, so.
I guess I'm, I'm a little confused, but what I would request is that AOT be a condition as it normally is.
Yeah, exactly.
And I see there's no additional risks that this, the town is taking on, so I'm for your consideration.
Yeah, I, I think that's absolutely the case.
So I, one more thing I just want to clarify before we, what feels like maybe move towards a motion here, because I've got a long list of condition, not a long list, a list of conditions. If, Glenn, it looks like your comment number 16 and Dennis's comment number 13 will sort of be equally addressed if we have a condition that the 4K areas for septic location be noted.
Are noted, yes.
Okay.
You are, you are reading that properly.
Also, I don't feel like I make motions from the seat, but I'm prepared to craft one as a so-moved opportunity if, if folks want to go down that road.
Before, before we get there, we didn't address one of the things from the Environmental Services, the hydrogeologic study, it says supplemental information should be incorporated in the study to include a table summarizing the available water supply well data, along with a figure indicating locations documented wells. This is talking about the water supply wells in the vicinity of the site that they thought was incomplete. And I'm not sure if...
Is that what Glenn was referencing earlier with the recommendation for additional monitoring?
That's monitoring wells, this is, they're talking about, well, the EEA has, Environmental Services concluded that proposed development will not impact these wells, this is surrounding property, water supply wells, supplemental information should be incorporated. What do you think?
Can we just, can we just say the recommendations of the offered letter?
Okay, that...
Should be, are part of the conditions of approval?
That does, and I think the, the monitoring wells should be specifically mentioned as a requirement on this other, so that, and I haven't gotten to the point where I've read that one. But yes, you can incorporate the recommendations of the TES letter of March 24.
Including additional monitoring wells. All right, let's do this. So we would be looking at a motion to conditionally approve the application of the multifamily development located at 178 Main Street, tax map R34, lot 17, with the following conditions. Referencing the letter from...
Can I just put the...
Yes, yep. This is from the letter provided by Civil Construction Management dated March 25, 2025, that items number six, referencing state subdivision approval and other state permits be noted on the plan. Number 13, that the 4,000 areas for septic be designated on the plan. Number 16, that lots are labeled and building numbers must be approved by the town. Number 20, that a construction sequence and phasing prior to, prior to construction occur. Number 21, that a construction bond estimate and reduction worksheet be provided prior to final approval. That the applicant obtain an alteration of terrain permit from the state, and that the stormwater operation and maintenance plan must be recorded in the registry of deeds, that's number 27. Number 29, the condition would be that there is no increase in runoff, I'm sorry, runoff rate from the existing conditions. And finally, item one, from Glenn Greenwood's memo to the planning board dated March 31, 2025, that any changes recommended by town council to the condo documents be made prior to final approval.
And then, we've determined that we have the TES letter.
Yes, thank you, I'm sorry. And finally, that the recommendations from the Tomford Environmental Services assessment dated 3/24/25 be incorporated, including the location, I'm sorry, the addition of some more monitoring wells.
You say?
I'll second that, it's easier.
So, motion by Eli Alessio, second by Peter Coffin. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
Want to make that a condition of 180 days?
Oh, some, two, four permits?
Yeah.
Final site plan, 180 days?
When you put the first challenge on it, or...
No, you're talking about for...
Yeah.
Is there any way to...
You can do it well before that.
Right.
Just if you don't do it by then, we have to give it a contingency.
Okay.
Which we're allowed to do by...
We're gonna, our intention is to get started.
I think it, I think it is.
So are we amending the motion to include a, a condition that the, the final plan be submitted and approved within 180 days?
That, that's like, proves some of those... Like the AOT, well, that should be 180 days, but, yeah, all that stuff, all, yeah, okay.
All right, so is that amended motion approved, Peter? Yes? All right. Do we need to vote on that? Let's vote. No? Okay.
Still, thank you very much. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Good job, Jimmy.
All right.
Yeah, it is, it is.
Let's just take a moment for Eli to bask in success moving the... Let's just take a moment for Ellie to bask in success moving this forward, yeah.
We were part of a committee back in the nineteen ninety's. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Um, if could we just take like two minutes so I can update these notes for Robin that clearly I should have been doing from the beginning? Um, and I called the meeting to order at six forty-nine, right?
Yeah. Town council, who's those common are, I think they have that agreement. I mean, I'd love to see that. Are they gonna bring it with the school district? Do you agree?
No.
Well, you're you're creating, do you have a unit for the gym?
The gym is a one unit town, and we have reached an ten years.
Yeah, and that's a separate. Because they don't own.
Common condo dogs, common area, common assessments, common charges.
Yeah, but there's people that are buying into the gymnasium.
Well, I mean, because it's it's unit fifty, so.
How's it going, man?
When you add condo dogs and one of the units is fifteen. What percentage interest do they have in common area? What percentage interest do they have in common fees and assessments?
They want to see the gym, and that's all they want. As far as see Tom way in and remember, hey, he has space to be. We can't do, there's no right to be.
In the beginning, you were talking about. Other words, they're gonna own this, they're gonna rent those apartments.
But not the gym, the gym is never part of the park.
I I know, but you had one owner of this piece of land that was gonna build apartments and rent them. But now you have all these units that are gonna be sold and no longer be held in that ownership. They're gonna be part of condominiums. Kind of changes things a little bit with, we own it, we're gonna lease it to you. Well, now that agreement's kind of carried forward to fifteen unit owners. And probably, I guess they're gonna hold on to the apartment buildings if they don't concur.
I it was it was honestly my understanding that Chinburg was holding on to that gymnasium, but I.
I go.
He is, I mean, at this point, that's he is holding on to it. He has said to me, some of the.
Well, I I I get that, but you're gonna have to change ownership over there. He's not gonna own that anymore. He's gone, and these are all sold. Conso Association's gonna own the land.
Yeah, condo association.
So then it's up to them what to do, is it ten years when the lease is up, right?
Well, I mean, they all gotta be legally bound to that agreement. Again, that's the thing I'd love to see is that agreement that they sign with the town. And I I think the town council might wanna have that when they reveal condo dogs as well.
She did not seem concerned at all with the information that she was providing, but I'm happy to ask her that very question.
All right, so next up on our agenda is the acceptance of the March fourth, twenty-twenty-five minutes with an asterisk. Asterisks, that if there are substantive changes, uh, that we wait until the next meeting so that Robin's here to understand exactly what those are. But if the motion would be, let's say, to approve the minutes as written.
Yeah, so move.
Second.
Oh, motion by Peter Coffin, second by Rob Tersola. Um, any further discussion?
Ah, she's strong on the board right there.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Like a South American dictator.
Careful now, be careful. I like to, Glenn, I feel that.
Some South American dictators are really nice.
Um, all right, so I'm guessing this is just for us, oh, look at this, reaffirm our decision on five seven twenty-four, which is attached here, but this is in reference to the sale of two town-owned properties. So forty-seven Newton Junction Road is still being held up by the search for prior owners, but we hope to resolve that in time.
Good luck.
Um, and then three tenth street is a small unbuildable lot that Anabutter has asked about purchasing. Tom Ruffin has verified that this lot is of no use to the town for snow storage, community septic or well, or anything else. According to our policy, the board needs any properties being considered for sale to be reviewed by planning and conservation first. So it looks like the forty-seven Newton Junction Road was the one that we approved on May seventh of last year, but the the three tenth street, nobody's waited on yet.
Yeah, I'll move that we reaffirm the sale of the forty-seven Newton Junction Road and also that we affirm the sale. Tenth Street, was it?
Three tenth street.
Tenth Street, yeah, three tenth street, um, property on the basis of recommendations.
Motion by Peter Coffin?
Second by.
Second by Eli Alessio. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Good luck and good luck in finding the owners because. Remember that property out by your own property, self property you had, and you were looking for the owners of the property next to it? We still haven't found them.
Multiple as well, I. One sixty-three Main Street, is that the first property? No, forty-seven Newton Junction Road, so what is this that I'm looking at here? Robin Phantom.
Aye.
No kidding.
Um, that's interesting. Oh, maybe did Dennis do a visit there?
Oh, he has.
No, this is for eighty-three. Yeah, all right, so I don't know what these photos are, but I'm familiar with them.
Is it correspondence?
Nope, it's just, it's like pictures, sites.
Building, what does it say for the address on that one, on your?
The first one is one sixty-three Main Street.
It's the corner of Main and Main and one twenty-five, is that correct? That was out of the property.
Oh, that was.
Yes.
That's not the one that's proposed for a second by the town. No, all right, so I don't know what that is. Um, and then we received an updated report, did everybody get that for Dennis's visit at C J and J? At eighty-three Route one twenty-five, okay? Correspondence, I don't see any in here. So.
There was something that came in, I saw by email recently.
A back and forth with Dennis?
No, it was just a short, somebody said, oh, Sixth Granite Road, or eight, they wanted to know if a honey dipper could go in there.
For what?
A a septic pumping truck. They call them honey dippers, but the.
This is wrong.
It is. But there was an email, and I thought it went to the planning board, they wanted to know if.
They shouldn't go to Z B A, didn't come here.
Oh, maybe it got to the Z B A, yeah.
I haven't seen that.
I haven't seen that.
Oh, okay, well, then you, is it Eighth Granite Road or somewhere?
Sixth Granite.
Sixth Granite Road, where they put the new building in.
Correct.
And they wanted to make sure that they could obviously not discharge the contents there, but I I would think that the owners would be like, are you sure?
But that's inappropriate use there.
Yeah, yeah, it's a storage of a truck, and presumably it's not gonna drip or leak or anything, yeah. But anyways, so you'll probably be getting that one, Robin gets back.
Did you say you had some business for us? Two.
Two things. Is it that time?
It's time.
Okay.
For any other business that may legally come before the board.
All right, two two requests, one what is what is this information? We have a busy public hearing next in two weeks. But three of the four issues are design reviews. The other, the one that is an actual public hearing, is just for the placement of two camps, two new camps at Camp Lakehead and.
Cabs, yeah.
Cabs.
Yeah.
And updating their bathroom to be A V A compliant. So no, I, we don't have any discussion about that. We have three design reviews planned. One of them is for the golf course, and the golf course land is split between East Kingston and Kingston. And it's a design review, so from my perspective.
Is this one that we've seen before?
They've been to us before.
Yeah, I I think they've modified it.
It was the gentleman that had his young daughter here?
No, that's that was a big.
That's across the street.
Okay, all right.
That's on the the north side.
One of them, I wanna keep the nine holes.
One oh seven, not the south side.
Okay.
So if it was an actual, if it was a if it was an application for site line review, we have agreed that we would make the determination at the work session before the public hearing as to whether we would send out notifications for regional impact.
Okay.
This is a design review. I'm not interested really in hearing or notifying other towns about a design review that is preliminary to actually having an application, where then we would ask people for their.
Yeah, all all required to is when we receive an application, certainly thereafter.
Yeah.
And there's no application.
And well, we have an application process for design review, but it's a non-binding discussion. It's not a, it's not an application or a decision.
Got it.
So I would prefer not to spend the time sending out notifications to these groups to come and give us information on a preliminary plan. The the process is so that they have input when an application comes before the board.
Yeah.
And if this works into an application, then I think that we definitely would declare regional impact. But it seems premature to be to do that at this point.
That sounds great. Do we need a motion on that?
No, no, I'm really just saying it so that we don't, so nobody's angry when we talk about this on the eighteen. And there hasn't been a regional impact notification, because it's.
Preliminary design review doesn't require it, yes. And and and, you know, it's not like East Kingston doesn't know what's going on.
Exactly, exactly.
You're presumably in contact with them.
They'll 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 have an application before that. It would be interesting to see if they send us a regional impact notification.
When they get the application, yeah.
When when they get the application, see if we both go to each other, but that remains to be said. The next thing is a question, I'm not sure how you feel about this as a board. Young guy who owns a little outdoors, so one it's on Kelly Row, right? Is that is it on Kelly Row?
No, Kelly's the one that goes to the high school.
It's on here, it's on.
Main, South Main Street, yeah.
Ice cream doors.
Yeah, oh, yes.
Bright green doors.
And he wants to, he wants to put in two more buildings.
Okay.
And he can't because he's zoned rural residential. And rural residential only allows thirty-five hundred square feet of commercial space, which he's already surpassed.
But that was pre-existing.
Yes.
That was pre-existing, that's why it was alive. He'd like to put in two more buildings, but he can't because of zone. Now, he could go to the Z B A, except the Z B A should look at such an application and say, you have a viable business operation there. Our ordinance says you can have more than thirty-five hundred square feet, so why would we grant you a variance? It's a precarious, he's in a precarious situation. What he has asked is, would the board support a change of zoning on that parcel from rural residential to commercial?
Hasn't that been handled through, I mean, the town would have to vote on that.
Yes.
It actually, it would, now that he couldn't do a thing until a vote next March.
Which we would.
His question is, would the board be in support of promoting that? Or would the board rather see that happen as a citizen's petition, zoning ordinance change?
I feel like the last two times we've talked about this, it's been a citizens' petition, correct?
We talked about this before?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We've talked about this parcel?
Not this parcel.
No, 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 we've talked about people who want to spot something and.
We can't do spot something.
I know, I I I wouldn't want to.
That's that's a third rail.
Right.
Which is why, right, we've asked that it come forward as a citizens' petition.
Right. And they support it, I haven't put it, I I don't think I'd ever. Yeah, because.
It puts us in a, it puts us in the town in a vulnerable carrier's position to support spot zone. I mean, it really does.
And all he does is the Warren article, it gets approved and it's done, right?
He's he's not, I mean, he, everything around him is rural residential. He has, he probably has one of the largest frontages on one twenty-five that isn't commercial. I mean, we've pretty much changed our zoning so that everything that fronts on one twenty-five is commercial, but his is not.
So that could be a case for him to make.
Not on one foot, not on one twenty-five, just on Main Street.
So that could be sort of his argument, right, to put forth the citizens' petition?
He could do that anytime, whether we support or not.
Right. All we have to do, though, is say that it meets the.
All the selectmen do is say if it meets one proper mark, throw it.
Yeah.
And then it can go on, and the planning board is required to say whether or not they recommend it or not.
Got it.
Okay, I will have that discussion over.
Okay.
Thank you. Me too, me too.
The property looks so much nicer than it did.
Yep.
And brighter.
I mean, he does, he does a really good job.
I suppose.
He does a really good job.
And it's pretty, as bright as those doors are, it's pretty out of sight, like, I don't know, you don't drive by, it's like, yeah.
Would the state have let him get that?
I'm sorry?
Would the state have let him access?
We don't have enough juice in town with any politician who would.
No, he can't, they're never gonna give him access on one twenty-five.
Restrictive.
We need a power of the world, which is that Main Street, where they're already on. And it's quite beyond the property after a Main Street end.
Yeah.
It used to connect, didn't it?
Yeah.
It it did.
A little dangerous. They consider that guy access dangerous now.
It's a small world.
Small world, it is.
All right, thank you very much for this.
No problem. Any other?
Which kind of brings us back to that East Kingston thing. They were originally gonna, sorry, all fairways. They were originally gonna go for a elderly housing or something they wanted to.
This this is this is not.
This is just gonna meet the meet our regular requirements. Yeah, see what they bring, yeah.
A design for us to look at.
Yes.
It's a block, a lot, actually. I want a lot, actually. Thirty-four more acres?
Thirty, that has become the most questioned parcel.
I bet, it's not a lot, it's just stuff.
I get I get a phone call about it all the time. Every day.
All right.
It's kind of, it's a bazaar, right?
Uh, well, there's a, there's a town-owned parcel, rather than parcel in between. But I think at the end, the bottoms of both of them, they do, you know, but, because it's thirty, it's thirty-five acres. Lot of people looking to do something.
Any more board business to be undertaken this evening? No?